For April 3, 2023 to order. This is the time and the place advertised. First order of business is Pledge of Allegiance. And we're going to have Officer Whitlock, our school resource officer, come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please stand, rise, and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Officer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Our next order of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. Also, as a reminder, the Liston City Council pledges to practice and promote civility within the governing body, advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of the city of Lewiston. Do we have any citizen comments today? It doesn't look like we have anyone here from the public. Okay. We'll move on to the next agenda item, discussion items. Please note that identifying an item as an active item does not require the city council to vote on that item. Our first item is number A, Fraternal Order of Police, Lewis Clark Lodge, number 10, City Council, consideration and staff direction of the Fraternal Order of Police, Lewis Clark Lodge, number 10's request to collectively bargain a renewed contract from October 1, 2023 through September 30, 2026. Director Province is going to kick us off, and then we'll hear from Officer Storms. He'll give us some words. So Director Province, please. And remember that microphones are up top. We have to kind of raise our voice a little bit so folks at home can hear us. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Nikki Province, HR Director for the city of Lewiston. I'm coming in front of you today to ask regarding negotiations for the Fraternal Order of Police. We've received a letter from the union requesting to start negotiations. If you remember, similar to this time last year, I came in front of you regarding the AFSMI collective bargaining agreement. And this year, I'm coming in front of you for the FOP. We are not required by law to negotiate with the union, but, and I guess really that's why I'm here, is in front of council to get staff direction on whether you would like us to begin negotiations for a collective bargaining agreement to present to you sometime later fall, September. And then if you have any questions or direction for the contract itself.
Counselor, quick questions. I don't see any, Director. Thank you. We'll have Officer Storms come up, please, and maybe just introduce yourself for the record, begin to speak up loudly and clearly. And then if there's anyone else in the room that you'd like to introduce, please feel free to do that. Thank you, and welcome.
My name is Joe Storms. I'm the new president of FOP Lodge 10. Some of you might know Officer Fox. He was the former president. He's going to be seeking employment with another agency, so I'm now the new president. We are seeking a new negotiation contract coming up, as you were just told. FOP Lodge 10 represents, I believe, 56 out of 60 possible union members that are eligible from the police department, so quite a large number. We believe that the negotiation process is the best way for the city to show both the officers and the citizens of your continued investment in the officers. So I would ask that you carefully consider that. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Officer. Can I ask you just to introduce others that are with you here today? Some of us don't work with you on a daily basis. It'd be good for us to.
Yeah, we have Officer Kent from Patrol, Officer Morrow from Patrol, and also Corporal Tenisha Earl from Patrol. And in the back, we have our SRO Katie Whitlock, Officer Chris Smith. Those are the members represented today.
Thank you very much. Counselors, the floor is yours for questions. Questions or comments?
I'm in full support of collective bargaining with the FOP. I'm in support as well.
Would you like to make a motion and codify that support for our officers?
I would move that we direct staff to enter into collective bargaining with FOP Lodge number 10, beginning whenever both parties decide. Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Counselor Lickie and second by Counselor Shorter to enter collective bargaining agreement negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police, Lewis Clark Lodge, number 10. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, and we look forward to doing business with you. Thank you very much for being here today, all of you, and thank you for your service, too.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nikki. Counselor, next up, we have a really, really big show for you here. It's City of Lewiston Strategic Plan, and we're going to have our PIO. I think we're, there she is, over there. Thank you very much. Kick us off on this. So Carol, if you'd please introduce yourself for the record. The floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Counselors, Carol Maurer, you're a Public Information Officer, and I am coming before you today to present the final draft of the current report for our City of Lewiston Strategic And before I dive into the history of the document, I thought for folks watching at home, we might show them where they can access this document on the city's website and for you as well. So here's the homepage of the city's website. If they're looking for this document, it's under Public Information, so under Departments. And what's that?
We have to talk really loud, because I know people at home are listening, and they want to hear what you have to say.
Okay. So, under Public Information, you'll find City of Lewiston Strategic Plan. I think at this point, it's important to note that we have the City of Lewiston Strategic Plan, which is the document that we're looking at today. There is another document, and I don't want to confuse the two, which is why I'm drawing this to your attention and the attention of the public. This other document is called the Lewiston Community Plan. And the difference between these two documents, the City of Lewiston Strategic Plan, is for City of Lewiston only. The Community Plan is a document that was developed with partnering agencies like Valley Vision, Chamber of Commerce, and things like that. So the City of Lewiston Strategic Plan highlights goals across our departments. So essentially, it supports the greater plan, but that's the difference between those. And so if you were to click on this link right here, it would lead you to the document online. So. So, the City of Lewiston Strategic Plan. This is a somewhat lengthy document that highlights the goals of the organization and identifies a plan to achieve those goals. What you have before you was developed, starting back in 2018. Between 2018 and 2019, city staff solicited public feedback and input in order to develop these goals. And as you look through it, you'll notice that there are, there's a substantial amount of things that have been completed, and there is still some things yet to be done. But that is because we have been working toward these goals ever since. There's been a lot going on the last few years, some different disruptions that made it difficult to get this document in a final format. And so we are doing this document in-house, which saves us a lot of money. It's time-consuming, but it's definitely something that we're trying out, and we're going to see where it goes. So I know you all have had a week or so to look at this document. It serves as a progress report ultimately for the city. And our plan moving forward is to bring these reports to you quarterly so that you can see the progress that's being made. The document also serves to help in budgeting, looking ahead at what's coming forward, things like this. So usually, these documents are planned with a four- to five-year outlook period, if you will. However, it's evolving all the time. So we could have a project that's going to be a 10-year project, right? And so that doesn't mean that project planning and things stop at five years, right? We just continue planning and continue moving forward. So in a nutshell, that's what's before you right now, and that's our plan moving forward. Staff are going to be meeting in the coming months to, you know, look at the next several years ahead, look at where we're at, talk about getting more public input on future planning, so.
Thank you, Carol. Lot of nuts around here, or nutshells, anyway, but I'm teasing.
Can you call them nuts?
Resembling them, remember. So, counselors, this is really meant to be your time to talk about this. I know that this has been asked about a few times. When I first came on board last year, it was my intent that we have some kind of a working document that we could be accountable to the people, our citizens. And so the decision was made last year to pick this up, if you will, put a bow on it. And, you know, beginning today or tomorrow, we start revising it already. That's how plans work. They're not meant to be stagnant. And so, but what this does do, I think, is provide a fairly good foundation as we enter into the next budget cycle, where you can look at this and say, okay, some of the decisions that were made in the past, why we're here today, were based on some of these projects that you read in there that have already been completed, and those that are a work in progress. But that said, when staff or I bring things to you of your consideration, you can reference this strategic plan and see how it fits or doesn't fit, or ask why we're deviating from the plan, or should we deviate, you know, and/or update it. And so throughout that whole process, this is a guide that I'll be looking at. So if there's a new budget request being made, we should be able to tie that to something so that the public, too, can hold us accountable, or at least they can see what we're doing with their dollars, you know, in terms of our effort here at the city of Lewiston. And so we have a vision statement in here that was put together years ago and pretty much adopted by the community, so that'll be our vision now, and that is a city of opportunity. And so you begin to see that in some of our communications, some of our taglines, stuff that we put out, that we are a city of opportunity. And so, you know, how we work together as a council, as a staff, as a mayor, and our citizens will probably be moving us in that direction until that vision is changed or updated or modified. So please, if you have some feedback, staff is here, they want to hear from you. Everybody's put a lot of time and effort into this, all the departments. And so please, if you have comments or questions, throw this out to us. In terms of an action item, you don't have to do anything with it. If you'd like, you could vote to approve the plan, not necessarily adopt it, but approve it, because this is a map, if you will. And then there'll be some kind of a, you know, an agreement between you and between staff and myself, you know, where we're headed. So counselors, pick a mic.
Thank you, Mayor. Some of the things looking at, and I see, you know, they were developed a long time ago, but one of the ones that I really like to focus on is that creating the economic opportunity. But when I go through these departmental, to me, they look like departmental goals, but I only really noticed one, maybe in Community Development, on page 18, had some in there that kind of roached around that effort, and they looked like they're all pretty new. Target start dates 2023, '24, '25. So I guess my question is, some of these are new, obviously, because why would you have projected five years out, you know, something? So are the departments establishing their own goals and putting them in there and trying to address the strategic plan, these high-level strategic plans? Is that what the goal is to, the departments looked at that and tried to figure out how that fit into their department?
Essentially, the answer is yes. And we, some of that, I use the word disruption. We've had a lot of change at the city as well, so we've had some new leadership come on with some new ideas and new ways of thinking and things like this. And so we developed some new goals that way. Our departments, some of them changed as well, and so through reorganization. And so there've been some new goals developed through that process as well. But all the goals, splitting it up by the departments, is our first attempt at, within each department, staff holding themselves accountable to their functions. But each goal within each department goes to supporting those overarching vision statements. So if it's safety, right, you know, a lot of that's going to be the police department and fire and their services to the community. Does that answer your question?
There you go.
Kind of? Okay. But in terms of a timeline, like we just talked about, the strategic plan is, I mean, it's ever-evolving. We just have kind of this goal range, right? So sorry if that doesn't fully answer your question. Maybe Mayor?
Well, I don't, I don't know that all the answers are in here, but the community is part of it, and that's, I think, what's important about it is, the yes is the answer to the first question you had about staff, because we went through this, we as a city went through this process, and some of the council members here may have been part of that, but putting together a vision and identifying what that vision is. And then they went through the different steps of identifying goals and objectives and tasks, things that they would do to accomplish that vision, to implement the mission of the city. And so each of the departments were responsible, are responsible, for identifying ways that they're going to help achieve these things, and that's what this plan does. It's a lengthy plan. It needs to be shortened, and we will do that next time around, try to simplify this in some respect. But this is what the departments had been working on at one time through a different program, actually, and then we changed the programs and went to a different format. We just stayed with it, didn't try to limit it.
I guess to cut to the chase, my big thing is, I think, right now, that I think our residents, taxpayers, I think one of their biggest things right now is the bringing in new retail businesses, the businesses opportunity in here. And I saw maybe that I could identify, and there's probably more in there, maybe five-line items that address this page number nine. I saw a lot of other vague things. They're all great things, but I really don't see it, this focuses on what really the public wants, is my opinion.
And I think that's okay. The purpose of this, like I said, tomorrow, we start rewriting the plan. Most of this was put together two, three years ago, and I felt it was important that we put a bow on this thing, that we actually crossed the finish line and complete some kind of a planning project instead of continually never reaching that finish line. And then we just talk about planning and strategic planning and visions and missions, and we never get there. And so that's what this does. This puts us across the finish line, and then we start rewriting it today. And you'll have that opportunity, especially through the budget process, when the departments will come to you, and they'll reference these plans, they'll have some new things that they're going to come to you with. And you can ask the question, okay, is that an appropriate goal for the city, you know, as we start moving forward and trying to achieve these things? Or we can rebalance these priorities? And that's really what we should be doing every budget year, anyway, is what are the priorities? And we can identify. Economic development is a great one to talk about, because we haven't done much as a city, and maybe not for lack of trying or effort, but, you know, if you look for some results on the streets, sometimes they're lacking, you know? And we talk about our mall that sits, you know, mostly vacant. We talk about properties in the city that are not developed. These are very important things for the city, and I know that conversations have happened in the past about that, and they're happening right now, and they're going to happen in the future, but we have to identify ways, hopefully, successful ways, that we can achieve what's in here. These things are in the future, and we're trying to get to them. And so we have to find ways to help us get to that point, developing these economic opportunities. So I think all criticism is fair at this time, all ideas.
Thanks, Mayor.
Counselor Forsman?
I see here, I think it's on page 16, for provide timely and professional services. It seems like some of this would address some of what I've been hearing for people that are trying to come in and build new things, is kind of getting stopped a little bit along the way, whether it be with city codes and stuff. So this seems like we're trying to address those issues and start getting better with them. We have the create plan review team to discuss project mid-review in order to streamline the internal view process, process fully reviewed permits within 24 hours. So some of this, I think, kind of goes in line with what you're saying. We're trying to make it where we're a business-friendly city, where they can come in and feel like we're working with them easily and in a timely manner. Hopefully, some of these goals seem to be in line with that, unless I'm misreading it, but that's what I'm kind of getting at of it.
Well, can I, can I ask maybe Director Gro to stand for a question? And maybe you could just give one or two examples of things that maybe have changed since you started. They may not even be in the plan, but we're continually moving forward on these things, because I know we've done a couple things, especially on the development side.
Yeah, and community development is going to.
Introduce yourself for the record, too.
Sorry. Shannon Gro, Community Development Director. Community development will look a little bit different from other departments, because where a lot of their goals are going to stay completed, they did start them three years ago. When I came in and looked at what we had, it really wasn't something workable, or what I felt was, looking at the community strategic plan and then looking at these other higher goals, didn't really align up with those. And so this one is, that's why you see a lot of these on track or not started yet, because I did revise them when I came in five months ago.
So can you give an example of, like, when you were trying to meet with developers, now contractors, we've tried to change some of these processes, working with public works, for example?
Yeah, so the one that you read about the plan review team, that one I felt was important because oftentimes, you will see that the departments are looking at permit reviews in silos. And the idea behind doing the plan review team is to internally, during a review, get together with the internal city departments, as well as the utilities or others that have jurisdiction over these permits, to talk together about what are our concerns about this permit or this project, and to not step over another department. Because if you're doing them, just looking at it from your perspective, then you may be making a recommendation that then puts something else from another department in violation. And so the idea is to work together and have a nice package to give to the permit retester.
So maybe just an example, counselor, of your comments, but also trying to do some things to move us forward. They're slow sometimes, maybe, since, but I feel like there are a lot of good things happening at the city that are already putting this plan into place, but probably more changes, more updates are going to come as we learn new things, so. Counselor Clayburn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Shannon, to be, having been involved in local government for a while.
We have to speak up so they can hear.
Having been involved in local government, it's gone back and forth over the years, you know? Somebody come in with a set of plans, and great, you know, well, you can't really do that, but this is what you can do. And then sometimes we got away from that, well, you can't do that. And then they leave frustrated. So nobody wants to hear the, you can't do that. What can I do? And I think I'm hearing that from some developers now, that it's getting a little better.
Right. So let's continue down that path.
Yeah, for sure.
Doctor Lickie?
I appreciate that this is completed. I think just having a completed document is a huge step in the right direction, so I commend the staff. I do want to point out that Director Johnson, this one, you're winning 10 pages. It's like a library plan within a strategic plan, which there's a lot of completions. I don't necessarily have a question, I just wanted to give you.
I was just going to remind you, we're a library, so we like to write a lot of stuff.
Right. I will say that, again, I, broken down by department may not be, for me, because of the partnerships that need to happen, I feel like a very important, for the public and for leadership, is that responsible party or responsible department of who's working on this particular goal, is something that is a very good thing to identify. And I do see that we do have some combinations here and there, but I would, like, I was going to say, economic development and community development in general, I think, I'm sure Director Gro will expand on that immensely. I was disappointed to not, and maybe I missed it, I did feel like I read this pretty thoroughly a couple of times. You know, the city owns half of an airport, and I feel like that needs to be in our strategic plan of how we utilize that, because I think it speaks directly to our economic development. So if I missed it, you can hit me over the head with this document. But I do feel like it's just really good to be done, and we can see the completions, and I think that's a very good thing to get out there. But I do feel like moving forward, you can get lost in this, so, you know, bringing some of those top priorities that you've to the top so that people can see active, you know, active roles. It felt like you could get pretty interactive with your new software, so I'm hoping to see that. I do feel like when I have an exchange with the community, I try very hard not to make excuses for them, either of, like, the information's out there, but I want it to be very clear so that they can see and track that progress. And I will tell you that when you went to navigate, even though you explained the difference, I'm going to forget that tomorrow and not know the difference. So I do feel like there's some things that we can work on. But I, again, it's just nice to see, like, we can mark that off and get started on what we've moved forward. So for me, it's a great start.
So if I can comment on that, because this, we're going to get into the budget season here real quickly, and the airport is a good example of that, where in the past, my understanding is that the city kind of viewed them much like a service agreement, you know, BDL, Civic Theater, see, now I'm going to forget them all, and then people are going to be mad at me. There, Valley Vision, Hills Canyon Visitors Barrel, and Airport and things like that. But we have the opportunity, as a council, I have the opportunity as the mayor, when we set our budget, to actually set a levy for the airport. We have the authority to do that, but I don't know when the last time the city's ever done that. And that would be a policy decision, and in fact, is something that I'm looking at, including in this year's budget. And by doing that, then you'll get to vote on whether the numbers are right or not, but it makes, I think, a real visible commitment to the airport to say, hey, that we are part of that, and it shows up in your taxes. Some people aren't going to like that, you know? But they're part of the community, they're part of our assets, what we manage here in the city. And so that'll be an addition coming up soon that we can talk about. But again, I don't see any of this as being a negative. I think it's all part of this strategic plan process, is that we are, we're hearing right now, today, that there's some updates we already want to make to it. We can do that, and the budget process is a good time to do that, because that's when we're going to set policy, and we can update these things. I can assure you that next year, when we put one out, it's going to be shorter. We're not going to have nine or 10 pages of Director Johnson's library, as well as it's written, and all the good things that are in there. I mean, it's very comprehensive, but we'll find some way, and I'm not pointing, putting blame anywhere, it's a very good accounting or library, but so that we can get folks to read this and understand that we're going to have to shorten it next year. We know that, but we just want to take it where it was at, get it to the council, get it to the public, you know, and open it up for critique, and then we'll, you know, make improvements to it as we move forward, so. Counselor Forsman?
Is this available to, like, I know we sometimes have some older folks that don't use internet very often. Can they get this book somewhere else?
Yeah. We.
Yeah, in fact, we have copies of the strategic plan as of today now at City Hall. I can make sure we have some copies available at the library and community center and some of our other facilities where folks may frequent.
Awesome, thank you.
Can I just randomly call someone?
Yeah.
Director Johnson? Well, I was just wondering if Jennifer could move it. There you go, there you go. Director Johnson, so I just want to ask you a question. You know, when we talk about strategic planning, and you know what's in here, you know, what value does this bring for you or to your department, especially going into the budget cycle or other reasons? How does this help you as the director, how does this help us as a city, you know, chart a course to move forward and be productive with our time and not just be busy?
Yeah, Public Works Director Dustin Johnson. So talking about this with our staff, not specifically this plan today, but talking about the hierarchy of data and how we convey the information to the public, it's kind of a pyramid, so the base level from my perspective is our master plan. So Public Works loves to plan, so we have master plans for stormwater, water, wastewater, transportation, and forgetting a couple of other ones. And so that is extremely thick, extremely technical information, and I can sit here and regurgitate to you for days on end, and it's probably going to go over most everybody's head. As we start refining that, you know, we built, we take that information to build onto the CIP and then into the budget and then into just basically these types of plans, that I can take it to, I can take that plan and say, when is the water treatment plant going to be completed? I can say, well, it has been completed, and this is when, this is how we've scheduled it and how we've processed through there, and you can kind of tick through, and all of that stuff on the base level feeds all the way up through that plan. And so that is kind of our North Star guiding of, why are we doing all these master plans? Why are we doing all these budgeting and CIP efforts? Well, that will basically, you know, refine all that data to tell you why we're doing it, how we're doing it, how we're paying for it, and what the schedule is for it. So when I come back to you in budget season, I will reference, you know, a lot of this stuff, I mean, as we've already said, this was, Chris Davies, my predecessor, started that, or drafted all, those were all, I think 90% of those were probably his. I went through with Carol about a year ago and took a lot of those out, and I've updated it. There's been a couple, couple of updates, you may notice, and they're timely, reservoirs and a few things like that, franchise fees were in there in refining those. But when I come back to budget, we will start going off of this document and saying, this one was done, this one is not done, this is the one we're going to be planning for the future.
Counselor Lickie?
Thanks, Dustin. Director Johnson, so like after we approved as a council, the roundabout, I got several phone calls and people were less than happy for the most part. Actually, I didn't receive a call that was in support, so let's just-
Counselor, you might have to speak up, I think people want to hear.
Sorry, I didn't want to say that part very loud. Anyway, I tried to explain the CIP, the capital improvement plan, and how this has been longstanding. Can you kind of talk about how maybe, they're both very accessible to the public if they choose to go find it, but can you kind of talk about how you will correlate those two so that we can really show the public, like, this has been a part of the plan, now we're moving it into, right now, top-level strategic plan for this particular year? You know, I really feel like that we're doing our part to make the information available, but I still feel like there's some gap, and I think that a strategic plan can maybe fill that so that if we can get this as something that the community buys into and really follows along, watches those real-time changes, that we can maybe get people connected more to the capital improvement plan, because I do feel like that is a struggle for your department to have people not show up and be involved. But you've mentioned it several times on how you're going to connect it to this strategic plan.
Yeah, I mean, and as a side, I think that roundabout was, I know people didn't like it, I have heard myself, I've read the comments, I've had the phone calls, and looking at the silver lining on that cloud, I will use that project projecting forward of, how can we get that information out better? Because I will, I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus, including myself, in that we have had public hearings, we have gone out, we've had, we've had information workshops or town halls where people can come and exchange ideas, and we collect, we have it open, I mean, it's open now, we will take comments on any projects. I want to, I do not want to, I say this all the time, I do not want to build a project that the community does not want. And so to try and get out there and get that engagement, and so this is, this is that, that, you know, that tool, that if it's not, if it's not in that plan, it's not on my radar. And some of these things, as I said, the basis for all these projects are built on data and research, and it is extremely dry, and the public really doesn't get engaged on water projects or sewer projects until their bills go up. And so when I say, please come, provide comment on the wastewater facility plan, we want to know what you think, as long as the toilets flush and the showers drain, they're more than, more than happy, and the rates are acceptable. That's where we're trying to get to. On the higher level, transportation, ADA, even now stormwater, some of those more visible projects, those are the ones I want to make sure that we're out there. And even if it is a high level, and just say, our focus is sidewalk connectivity to schools, or we want to improve Main Street, or 21st Street, whatever it is, to start on something that's more digestible and say, you're passionate about 21st Street, you're passionate about Brighton, here's where it ranks, come give us feedback. And so like the roundabout one, that one was not as visible as most projects that we talk about on a daily basis, and so maybe people weren't, it wasn't on the radar. I know for myself, if I didn't work for the city of Lewiston, I probably wouldn't pay much attention to the CIP or where our facility plans are, and so I've got better things to do, I've got kids, they're going to keep me pretty occupied, so I'm not going to, but when you start seeing actual projects out there, or, you know, whether it's utility rates, property taxes go up, you're starting to say, where am I getting my, where are these funds going to? So my goal, and I will continue to work with Carol, I will continue to work with the council, I just want to get feedback. And if it's honest feedback to say, that was the dumbest project you've ever done, I will take that feedback and I will learn. But this is, this is that avenue, to get that out to the people, and if they look through, you know, go back, go past the library and get to the Public Works page, which is three or four pages, and say, I don't see X, Y, and Z project on here, and I think it should be, we, we come back to you every year for the CIP update. And like I said, emails, phone calls, we don't, we're here, and we try to go out to the public, but we'll take comments whenever we can get them.
I think you have a friend behind you there, Director.
Carol Mauer, City Public Information Officer. That was a great question, and thank you, Dustin, excuse me, Director Johnson, for your information. I just thought it was worthy to note that I think that we will see more public participation in things when our members of the public feel like they're being listened to, and that's one thing that this strategic plan can help with. So we're talking about quarterly updates, but that also comes in the form of regular updates, right, whether it be a project or something. Let's say we have 160 residents come in, they all want to see this one street repaired, or they want to see something happened, something happen with it. And then we show them, we say, okay, we heard you, this many people said yes to this, they want this project. We show them in a progress report, hey, look, we listened to you, we're doing what we can, trying to be efficient with our time and with resources. And I think the more that we're able to report those things out to the public, the more they might feel like their, their voice is being heard. So we've got, with this effort, we've got a big push of trying to show that progress, to solicit more feedback, so.
Counselor Spickemeyer, if you remember, a few months ago, you'd asked that question about strategic planning, you know, and you asked the question, why am I voting for some of this stuff, you know, where is it all based at? So we didn't quite get to the point of adding it to a future work session agenda as a topic itself and having these town hall meetings and then doing all that, because I knew that we had this. And so I just wanted to get this one over the finish line, and if you want to have some more town hall meetings and rewrite the vision statement and mission and strategic goals, we can certainly do that. But I think this is a good start, a good foundation that we can build upon, you know, as we start setting the budget for this next year. Counselors, do we need to call anybody out of their chair? Anybody else?
No, but I'll speak.
Counselor Schroeder?
Since I was here in 1819, in the public outreach, it was very exciting, the ones we had, and people were excited to be there, and they, we really got them involved, they had stations for all the different categories here. I didn't remember the station for the library being that large, but it's okay. We really enjoyed them, and I think the people really enjoyed it, and we took a lot of their input, obviously, and created this, and it's very exciting to see that a lot of it has been completed. And so I'm really proud of the time that we put into that, and then, of course, we had several other outreaches planned, and they had to be canceled, and we all know why. But yeah, it was very sad when we couldn't go through that and do it again the next couple of years, but it was, it's a great opportunity for the public and the council and all the departments were there, and so they got to ask directly to the department heads what their questions were. So it was, it was a great time, enjoyed it a lot, glad I could be a part of it.
Thank you, Counselor. You know, I think we need to give Director Lynn Johnson a chance to come up here and defend herself, so if you would, please come forward. We never get to see you, are here for you.
I did not say it was a bad-
Look at the smile on her face, okay. But I do want to ask a question, again, I'm just trying to get us into this a little bit, talk about it, but here is on page 41, at the top there, it's goal number three, library, it says, support Lewiston's economic and workforce development and employment opportunities for its citizens. So maybe you could, without me having to read this, because I don't have my glasses on anyway, if you could just kind of explain that and how the library is filling this role to achieve, you know, the vision that we have, you know, to be a city of opportunity.
So Director Johnson, library Director Johnson, not Public Works. Actually, libraries have been looking at how they can contribute to community development. We are, and it became even more highlighted through COVID, a place where people were coming to work from home, but work from the library, because we have free public Internet, we have spaces, we have quiet rooms, so it became even more highlighted. I've attended several director summits where people are talking about, well, how can you provide that economic development? I've heard sessions from Europe where they actually have job incubators right in their libraries. So these are things that we've talked about and been aware of, they've been in library journals for several years now. So my most recent foray into it was when I attended the conference in New Orleans this spring and went to another session on how we can contribute to development, and came back with it, why am I not working with Public Works? Why are we not putting on informational sessions about how to get your job, your business license at the library, free to everyone, and making that process easier so people really do understand? Because libraries really are about getting that information out there, and we're the perfect setting to do that, besides the fact that we, we know we have people who come in our spaces and just work from there on their computers or have conference calls or whatever. That's one thing. And thank you, this is my second opportunity to speak to people today, so. Any other questions? I know, I apologize for the length, I am very wordy, but we've done a lot of things and we had a lot to tackle in four years, so. Other questions?
Counselors, another question for our library director? I learned something new, I didn't know that, but it makes sense, you know, why we wouldn't use our library resources to help promote some of the things that we do as a city, you know, Public Works and community development and other things, and that maker space, if you will, that you have over there, and different ways of trying to engage the communities so that we can, you know, grow together and have achieved our vision and our mission on some of these things, so. I'm trying, Director, I can't get you another question.
It's okay.
Counselors, I'm not going to beat you over the head with this, I'll just, if you want to call it quits, we'll call it quits, but I feel pretty good about this effort, everybody's put in a lot of time, we didn't spill blood over it, but we certainly got pretty excited sometimes, but we held each other accountable, we set a hard deadline of March 31st, and we met it two days early, so I'm very proud of everyone for their effort to do that, you know, and good enough and on time, you know? Perfect and late is not always the right answer, because we may never cross that finish line, so I think this is, is a good work product, something that, you know, I'm going to take out into the community, and it's going to help me and how I serve in my position, so.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt, and thanks to the directors for taking time to work on this. It has been a work in progress, and this isn't, like, this isn't cast in stone, I mean, I just, everybody knows that, this is something that's a document to assist the city in how we want to get to where we want to be, and it certainly is going to be amended several times. I don't think we necessarily have to rewrite the whole document, but from a standpoint of guidance and budget decisions and things like that, if you have a plan, it makes your budget decisions a lot easier than just winging it. So I'm happy to see this, knowing that we're going to start the budget session or budget meetings here fairly soon, so. This is, I think it's a well-done.
Counselor Forsman?
Yeah, I would just second that, it's nice to, for me, I'm a checklist kind of person, so I appreciate all the highlighted colors and the completed and what still needs worked, work, excuse me, and the comments, and when the completion of the year that we projected to see. So hopefully, too, we get some citizens to look at this and kind of say their opinions on things and what they like, dislike, or maybe where they feel like our focus should be, so hopefully this lays that out for them, and to me, it's very clear, it's easy and laid out, so I appreciate the staff's and everyone's time putting this together, and glad to have it.
Okay, sounds like we've got a point where we can move on. Next up is unfinished and new business, city councilor comments, counselors, comments shall be, not be related to an item currently before the city council or an item that may come before the city council in the foreseeable future, and shall be limited to comments, not discussion. Counselor Lickie?
Yeah, I just want to commend the city staff, especially the HR department, on a well-done fire chief interview and meet and greet. For me, it was a chance for me to sit back and watch the interactions of the two candidates, but also what was most enjoyable was that I got to see some firemen friends that I hadn't seen in a while, got to visit with them and be a listening ear to them when otherwise we might not cross paths regularly, so well done. I thought the city did a very good job. I believe it was Jay who mentioned this was a two-way interview, and I thought we did very well on our own, so well done. And then I just want to, you know, we've had this new former government a year and a quarter, and I think we've had to learn a little bit about each other, and again, I just, to all the city staff, from just requests that I've made, questions that I've asked, that you guys have just done a really great job of getting information when asked, and I see good things, and I just hope that the staff knows that myself and the other council members, we want to do right by you and also our citizens. So again, I just want to thank you, it's been an interesting transition, and I think for the most part, we're getting our way through, so.
Thank you, Counselor. Other council comments? City boards and commission updates. I guess one update we can throw out there is that we still do not have five members of our compensation review committee, is that right? We have four applications?
Yeah, we received three applications.
Three applications, we're trying to get five people in the community to serve on that compensation review committee, and then your recommendations have to be back to the city clerk's office by June 1, and that will go quick- and that will go quickly. So if you're out there listening and are interested in serving, we're asking for you to step forward and please help us in this effort. Contact the city clerk's office for information on that. It's a one-year commission. You'll actually meet a couple of times in probably April and May, and then your work will be done. So thank you for considering that. Mayor comments? I don't have much more to add. We are going to hopefully wrap up the fire chief process soon, and I'll be working with the HR tomorrow morning. We're going to do another quick, a visit with the Western Fire Chiefs Association, I think, and try to make a decision on this. So it's been tough, and just thank everybody for their involvement and for the candidates for coming here today and for putting themselves out and wanting to serve our community. Next up, advisory board, commission appointments. I don't think we have any today, right? See them there? So agenda topics, counselors, anything you need to talk about or discuss for an upcoming meeting? Counselor Lickkey?
Yeah, so in our March work session, we had a facilities report, which I very much appreciated the thoroughness. And I started really digging into the budget a couple of months ago. And one thing that I think would be a good thing for us to at least approach in some way is looking at all of our buildings and whether or not they are efficient, or if we could consolidate in any way as part of our planning, because our utility bills alone, because of how spread our, we are feel like something that we could look at, making some decisions that could cut our costs overall. And so I'm not sure how to make that an agenda topic unless it was to direct staff to bring, maybe director or department directors bring to us, you know, the space needed, could they consolidate? How old's their building? Is it really working? I feel like we've, I feel like you've had to use buildings much like myself in the nonprofit, you just make do with what you have. And unfortunately, that can work, but oftentimes it leads to higher costs over time. And so I do think that that's something we should look at across the board. I visited Station Two last week. It was locked during the day. Power was running. It's being used, but nobody was there. There's a lot of history there of how we got there. I just feel like there's some conversations that could be had of, are we using the spaces that we have to the utmost efficiency? And can we create a plan that would serve the employees and our assets as they need, but also cut our costs?
Making a note here, thank you, Counselor. Counselors, if you don't have questions on that, you know, have that in the form of a motion, or would you like Director Barker to answer a question, or he's back there hiding?
Well, I'd like to make a motion, I just don't know what it is, so...
Director Barker, could you stand for a question?
Sure.
Good answer.
It's not a problem. Come on up. We can make it quick.
Tim Barker, Parks and Rec Director for the city. I think, based on your comment, I think that's probably the most reasonable next step after we had provided that report, is to look at what the current uses of all of our facilities, what are, as Council President Lickkey mentioned, what our utilities look like and what kind of consolidation in energy efficiency, and just even within what we do within facilities, whether it's custodial or facility maintenance, what kind of efficiencies could we come up with if we did consolidate? I'll have to check with staff to find out what kind of a timeline we can produce something, because this would mostly be internal that we would be doing. At the same time, we're working on getting all of our HVAC systems and all of our mechanicals into the cardiograph system, which we tagged along with Public Works on, and that's how we're going to start tracking all of our assets and figuring out when replacements and standard maintenance are completed. I'd love to say that we finished that two years ago, but we really started it this last year, so it'll be kind of a combination of trying to, I'll check back and get back to you. But I would have no problem with us moving in that direction, it just is timing.
Well, Director, too, and if I can reference our new strategic plan, they're on page 46. Goal Three says, "Have safe, well-maintained city facilities." And so when we look at the objectives under that, there's one, two, three of them, and then there are several strategies listed. You know, this is where I think as a council, we can help Director Barker identify, you know, what our priorities are as a council, where we'd like to have him direct his staff and spend his time and efforts to do that. That might mean eliminating one of these objectives and just focusing on this one as a key objective, and then provide some feedback on it. So we have it in here, and the very first one says here, if my eyes would work, "Identify the future needs of each department..." Yeah, my eyes, I'm sorry.
Related to facility development and expansion.
Page 46, but then it says, "Completed by 5/23." So it's on track for completion. Read that, are you eyeing it in mine?
PNR, police, fire, finance, legal, community development, public works.
Yeah, that's just noting what their needs are. I mean, we won't get that completed by 5/23, but we've started reaching out to the departments within the last week, few weeks following last month's work session presentation. But that's just, that task is just identifying what the needs of those departments are, not really creating a resolution at that point.
So I'm trying to help you out here, Counselor, you know, if that helps you. If there's a motion you'd like to make or some direction or something, but...
We can, I don't, I'm not going to make a motion with a timeline. I do feel like, and I think just, we need to be priorities, because this is where we can immediately, like, with simple decisions, cut some costs, which can then go to. And I think that task number one, you know, identify the future needs of each department related to facility development and expansion. We want to expand, but I feel like we need to take care of our own first and then focus on expansion. And so I think that's, and I love that this is complete, that we can look at it and now really dive into, you know, how does that need to look? And I, you know, we talked about working with Avista to upgrade all of our lighting and things like that, so I don't know that I have a motion except to, we need to keep talking about it. And I would just like to add real quick, the department directors deserves our praise, but we have very, very good city staff who are not directors, but boots on the ground, who are well-educated, and I know they play a part in this. So I just wanted to do a quick shout-out to your guys' staff that I think help us understand what's going on. But I just, as I said, I think that if we can just keep that conversation going, and when we can pull the trigger on a target date of bringing, you know, maybe even some considerations of...
Well, I think that's good, Counselor, because, you know, because as you look at strategic plan, and it says here, "Target completion date," that's not permission for Director Barker to go back to his desk and change that from 8/23 to eight, or 5/23 to 8/23. That's not how these things work. What we do is we reevaluate and say, "Okay, maybe it's not a good task, it's not working." So get rid of it or implement it, one or the other, but not to continually push these things out. And I think that's part of what our job is, is as a council, you know, and a mayor, is to hold folks accountable, you know, and then show some results for that. So we talk about that, so...
And I do think we have identified a lot of, I mean, in the work session alone in March, I do think we identified our needs. And now really it is, you know, maybe it is adding a goal of like, now that we know our needs, let's start hacking off that list of liability. That's how I see it. When you have deferred maintenance, you have liability and huge risks, so... I think the goal, the objective is fine, I think we need to add to it.
Director Barker?
Yeah, just one, since I've got the floor. When we're going through the budget process, it'd be helpful from staff standpoint to have these goals reviewed, and then if prioritization happens during that budget process, that would be great for us, because then that gives us targets for the next year of what we want to focus on. And as the mayor mentioned, that may adjust some of these statuses, but it doesn't mean we're forgetting them because we're shifting our focus. Last thing I'll say is, not to correct you, but I would love to if I could have the opportunity, is Station Three is the station.
I kept asking if I was saying the right one.
Chief Michael Buss was a little worried about Station Two.
Station Two's the one that needs new siding, and I'll get them right. I know they're just, you know, thank you for the correction.
I thought we were talking about that place in Clarkston.
Station Three. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Director.
And I...
Counselor Lickkey?
When directors are working on those things, I appreciate that because of those conversations, Director Barker has reached out off, you know, not during a meeting, whatever. I'm available to, if I set something we need clarification on, I encourage the directors, I will gladly leave my office for a little bit to come meet with you and have you explain things so that we're not, you know, having to extend these meetings all the time.
Thank you. Thank you, counselors. Counselors, other agenda topics for consideration? No? Okay. Well, we've reached the end of our agenda. Ready to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Kleber, second by Counselor Schroeder to adjourn. Is there discussion? Those in the room, please, say goodbye by saying hi.
Hi.
opposed, motion carries. We adjourn, thank you, Counsel.